Good evening, everybody. We will call this 53rd regular session to order. We'll begin by having the invocation led by Councilmember Munson, followed by the pledge to the flag. Please stand as you are able.
This prayer is an old Irish blessing, wishing you always walls for the wind and a roof for the rain and tea beside the fire, laughter to cheer you and those you love near you and all that your heart might desire. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just to review our announcements, the rules of procedure were adopted on September 24, 2013. Use of cellphones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and include a copy for the city clerk for the official record. Our schedule for November, we'll have a meeting on Tuesday, November 4th, next Tuesday. Our work session, we will not have any meeting on the 11th in honor of Veterans Day. On Tuesday, the 18th, we'll have a work session and on Tuesday, the 25th of November, we'll have a regular session at 7:00 PM. And we have several guests with us here this evening. The first guests I would like to bring up are our economic development staff and this is a celebration for Economic Development Week. We have a proclamation here for Jill Frick, our economic development manager, and Andrew Sargent, who represent the city so well in economic development endeavors. And this is a proclamation for Economic Development Week, October 26 through 31, 2014. Whereas, the City of Hagerstown's Department of Community and Economic Development is an active member of the Maryland Economic Development Association, or MEETA, a nonprofit organization established in 1961, whose mission is to enhance the knowledge and skills of its members and to encourage partnerships and networking among those committed to bringing jobs and investment to Maryland. And whereas MEETA members promote the economic well-being of Maryland by working to improve the state's business climate and professionalism of those in the field of economic development, including other professionals with an interest in the economy of Maryland, and through its regular meetings, special programs, projects, members address diverse issues. And whereas, the economic growth and stability of the state affects all regions and jurisdictions of Maryland, and the City of Hagerstown is an important component of the state's economic success, now therefore, I, David Geisberts, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, Maryland, do hereby proclaim the week of October 26 through 31, 2014, as Maryland, I'm sorry, as Economic Development Week in Hagerstown, Maryland, and encourage all citizens to recognize and reaffirm the importance of business development locally and statewide. Jill, thank you very much. Andrew, thank you. Would you, thank you, thank you. And then we'll get you to do a speech afterwards.
I'm three. One, two, three. Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Would you like to say anything about Economic Development Week?
Sure.
We want to thank you for the proclamation and for the work that the staff does for economic development. Much of our job is done in partnership, both with the private sector and with other community organizations, so we want to thank our partners that we work closely with. There's an impact to the work that we do, both for businesses and for the community. And so, so on behalf of the city, we want to thank everyone for acknowledging Economic Development Week this week.
Thank you. Thanks. Andrew, no speech from you? Okay. Okay. Well, I'll be talking about the big announcement in my comments here. Yes. All right. And our next guests are here representing the Young Marines. Ryan? Please come on up. Young men, would you like to introduce yourselves?
Hi. My name is Lance Corporal Brian Buck.
Lance Corporal Brian Buck.
Lance Corporal Thomas Buck.
Lance Corporal Michael Dezerowski.
Lance Corporal Michael Dezerowski.
Dezerowski.
Dezerowski. I know with a name like Geisberts how that can be sometimes. Please stand here so that folks out there can see you. And I want to thank you for being here tonight. This is a proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. And this is a very important issue, and just today, we, I was there with the chief at the Discovery Station. Have you guys ever been to the Discovery Station in downtown?
No.
Well, you should check it out, especially because now they have an exhibit that has been around nationally. It's called Target Maryland, and it's about the drug issue that is not only here in Hagerstown but across the state of Maryland, and the things that you can learn about what drugs do to your brain, where the drugs come from. I mean, it's a very comprehensive exhibit and very informative, and you guys should check it out, as well as everybody in the community. But this is a proclamation for Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st, 2014. Whereas, communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those who traffic them. And whereas, there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and the hope lies in education and the demand, drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Shenandoah Valley Young Marines and the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas, governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas, the Red Ribbon was chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Quique Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas, Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas, October 23rd through 31st has been designated as National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment, now therefore, with the support of the city council, I, David Geisberts, the Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby recognize and proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2014, as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Hagerstown, and encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, media, religious and educational institutions to wear and display red ribbons and participate in drug-free activities throughout the week. And as has been said so many times, it is really a three-legged or three-pronged approach to fighting drugs. One of those is law enforcement, but the other is prevention and of course, treatment. So it's not only a legal issue, but it's certainly a health issue, and we hope that you guys continue to make healthy choices, continue to challenge yourself and be successful. And with that, I have only two. I was only expecting two of you. So Buck family, you get one, and then you can take this one here, and I'm assuming you want to do a photo? You want to come up here and take a photo? Who else do you have here with you?
One, two, three. One, two, three. Kind of rotates or you're straight across.
Uh-huh. Like that? Is that good?
Sure. One, two, three. One, two, three. Is there another one? One, two, three.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Bob.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will turn to citizen comments. We have one dedicated citizen here with us this evening, Mary Haynes. Please come on up. And let me just remind everybody that citizen comments are limited to five minutes per individual, and you know that your comments will be on air and on tape and on YouTube and that you're, we're obviously televised and recorded. So with that, Mary, go ahead.
Well, I can say I wish they were going to be in the paper.
Mary, could you pull your microphone closer, please?
Thanks.
That's it.
I could say I wish they were going to be in the paper as well. As I was introduced, I'm Mary W. Haynes, and I've come down here tonight to thank Penny Nye for handling the 1163 Hamilton Boulevard situation and for being there for us every time we called throughout this long mess, which may not be over even now. I called, she came over immediately, in the Honda with the leaking battery. She got the police actively involved, and she and they got onto code to come around. Speaking of code, I would like to tell Mr. Lambert, head of code now, as well as remind you all that I have been in here over the years to talk about everything from needing two men on a fire truck to the Alm's house, which got me nowhere, and of late, the messes on Jonathan Street and on West Washington Street, which the paid consultant seemed to have gotten cleaned up finally. I also want to say that I do appreciate that this council has not had one of its members a year in decide he wanted to leave for the job he was always meant for. Thank God the voters didn't think so. Also, all of you are more than a few years past puberty, and to this point, you have not pursued boondoggles to the exclusion of all else, and you seem to be trying to reconstitute code to an effective level of strength and morale, so we'll have no more 1163 Hamilton Boulevards. I think I need to restate that code got dragged in by the police, a heroic officer actually, and that code and I are having an ongoing conversation about 1163 still not being secure. If I could get a notice this summer about the leaves on my dogwood not being at least seven feet off the sidewalk, et cetera, and I had 90 days to get them up and off, then one would think an 1163 could be handled a bit more expeditiously. I used kitchen sears on those nasty leaves. Thank you all.
Thanks, Mary. City administrator is out of town, but Ms. Paulson, do you have anything, any comments?
Between 6:00 and 8:00. We just encourage folks to use caution driving through our neighborhoods, and if you choose to participate, just turn on your porch light.
Thank you for that. Now to mayor and council comments. Who would like to begin? Ms. Nye, let's start on this end tonight.
Just one thing. The utility relief benefit concert is tomorrow night at 7:00 at the Maryland Theater. I hope that a lot of our city employees will attend. The money will be used for those who are having problems struggling with heating this coming winter, so please make an attempt to be there. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Munson.
To the Public Works Department, the Parks Board, the Police Department, and perhaps others that I do not know about, a big thank you for their pre-parade preparation, their work during the parade, and their work after the parade in terms of cleanup and repair and keeping good, good order. Our city workers worked very hard to clean up after the parade. I came down here Saturday, or I'm sorry, Sunday, after the parade to look at what was done, and downtown was absolutely clean, and that took a lot of work, a lot of effort. And I think we can be really proud of the good work that these people did on behalf of the citizens of the City of Hagerstown. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Metzner.
Thank you, Mayor. The parade, as usual, was wonderful, and I want to thank everybody who was responsible for that. I guess it was the evening before that we had the pleasure, I know Don and I and the mayor, of having a very nice dinner, 28 South, with the city manager of Hagerstown, Indiana, and his lovely wife, and it was a very nice evening, and I would encourage all to become active in the sister cities. I think the last thing to say is, I think Penny mentioned there was a utility relief concert on Wednesday, and I think we all owe a great debt of gratitude to Councilwoman Nye for this. If it were not for her actions, there would not be a utility relief concert tomorrow night, so for all those who can attend, please do, and for those who can't, send some money in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brubaker.
Well, I won't repeat the praise for the Alsace Parade from Councilmembers Munson and Metzner, except to say, it was the usual great parade, the usual great turnout, and the not-so-usual great weather.
Yes, indeed. Mr. Alshire.
I had the opportunity, privilege yesterday, to attend the ribbon cutting and opening of the after-hours Pediatrics Business, now located on Eastern Boulevard. I will say that I think I was the last guy you called on the list, and, which is odd because I'm the guy with five kids that goes to Dr. Booty, so it just seemed a little weird. But, but it's a cool facility, definitely welcoming to children, something that's definitely needed, and, you know, I think as he said, it is truly for that sort of emergency care that, you know, you want to take kids to when you don't want to take them to the regular emergency room. So, so it is a feather in the cap of the community and a privilege, I think, that they decided to locate in the city. Also, you know, I attended, I came downtown after the parade, I guess was sort of wrapping up Saturday night, and, you know, the reason that you saw it so clean Sunday morning is because of the work of city staff that basically blew, you know, the debris from one end of town to the other and cleaned it up, and it was, it was a pretty impressive sight to see, you know, the quickness with which they had things back in order. Also, I met with the chief of police earlier today. I wanted to talk about a couple of items that I've noticed, again, as a sort of, you know, walk among the community, and, and as I've said for, you know, for the two years I think we've been in office, that, you know, we're not going to work ourselves out of certain elements of degradation in the community by spending our way out of it. It's going to take regulatory process as well, and I think we've been hitting that, as Ms. Haynes alluded to, pretty well, but some of the things I still notice are, we have a ton of apartment buildings downtown that leave the front doors open 24/7, so, you know, midnight, 6:00 AM, whatever, the doors to the inn are open, which just seems real odd to me. And then, you know, there's some, some issues, like the grates that you see throughout the area, you know, I think there's some issues. You know, we had discussions about, you know, the different transportation services, taxi-type services around town that clearly offer different levels of service and operate in different manners. I know that Frederick has a specific process to review that, and I know that there's been some discussion about creating a city liquor board, and, you know, that there are, I think, certain instances when I notice that, you know, we could benefit from, from a little bit of that oversight. So any number of these things, I think, on a regulatory side to help improve conditions, I think would be welcome discussion to have. Also, I'd like to request that we have a discussion at some point. I was able to get a copy of our existing agreement with the Hagerstown Housing Authority and its many amended versions. I think it's from 1965, but, you know, there's at least two places in that agreement that just seem outdated to me. One, which appears to read that if the payment in lieu of isn't paid, there is no process for enforcement to make that payment made, and then the other is the 10% clause, where it's 10% or whatever the state sets, whichever's lower. I would just be curious to see how it's changed in 50 years, and so I'd like to have a discussion. I'd also like to have a discussion at some point about owner-occupied regulatory process. I'd like to thank staff. We drove by MELP, I guess, yesterday, and it's, it's almost surreal when you actually see equipment out there dismantling the building, because as somebody who grew up in town and has seen it stick out as an eyesore as long as I can remember, it, you know, it's almost like you don't believe that it's actually coming down, but it is, not without hiccup, but it, but it is. And then I also would encourage mayor and council, I met with the new director of the Chamber of Commerce earlier today, and I think he's looking to reach out to meet with some of the other mayor and council members. Great gentleman, and I would encourage everybody that if you can get ahold of him or when he gets ahold of you to sit down and have lunch, because I think coming from Frederick City, I think he offers a good perspective of sort of, you know, their trials and tribulations and becoming a successful community, so.
I've already had that lunch with him and met him now several times. I do agree he has a lot of energy and a lot of, a lot of good ideas. I, I also want to just piggyback on all the praise and thanks for the city staff, police officers and public works, and everybody who contributed to such a successful mummers parade. It was the best weather I can recall in a long time for the parade, and it was very special to have not only Tony and John Amendez be the grand marshals of the parade, but to have our, the town manager and his wife from Hagerstown, Indiana, also be a part of the parade. And it was a very nice dinner that we had, and I want to congratulate and thank once again Mike Kiefer, who was really the impetus behind creating the sister city between Hagerstown, Indiana, and its namesake, Hagerstown, Maryland. It's an interesting history, and I never stop learning in this position about my own community and certainly how we're tied to so many other communities in the country. So I also wanted to mention the MELP. You know, I don't know if folks have seen, but there is a lot of progress happening there. I believe up to three and a half million gallons of water has been removed from the basement, all, you know, permitted and vetted by the Maryland Department of Environment, so even if there's not a lot of visible change on the outside, which there will be a lot more of in the coming weeks and months, certainly a lot has been happening, and it will definitely be a benefit to the whole community when that project is completed. Also, I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that on Thursday, October 30th, at 2:00 PM, we will be here in the square to roll out the Main Street Maryland program here in Hagerstown. The state has designated Hagerstown as a Main Street community. This is a program that began in 1998, that focuses on revitalization and economic development within the core, basically, if you can imagine, the Arts and Entertainment District of Hagerstown. And I'll be accompanied with the acting secretary of the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for that announcement. It'll be very exciting. I know Andrew and Jill and staff have put a lot of time, I think it's taken over a year to go through the process of application and getting approved, so I want to thank them. I think it started with me coming back from a Maryland Municipal League Conference and saying, why aren't we doing this? And they took it and ran with it and have done a great job of coordinating all of those efforts, and much more work will be put into that as well, so I want to thank them for that. So hopefully, I'll see everybody at 2:00 on Thursday. And with that, I have no more comments, so we will move into the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, in recognition of the accurate work of our outstanding city clerk, I hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and city council meeting held on September 9th, meetings, I should say, held on September 9th, September 16th, September 23rd, September 35th, 2014.
Second. As amended.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the consent agenda be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Unfinished business is the approval of an ordinance amending city code, Chapter 79, curfew for juveniles.
Mayor, hereby move from mayor and city council approval of an ordinance to amend the city code, Chapter 79, curfew for juveniles, to revise the definition of a juvenile, to include persons under 17 years of age, to revise the hours during which the curfew is in effect, and to establish a graduated civil penalty, penalty for parents.
Motion made by Ms. Nye and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Ordinance is approved. Under new business, item A is the approval of a resolution for a residential lease agreement at 120 Key Street. That would be the Hager House.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council adopt the attached resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the City of Hagerstown and Emily Nicole Conrad for the second floor apartment in the Hager House Museum, residence of 120 Key Street. Lease shall be in effect from December 1, 2014, June 30, 2015.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do. When I had asked about the apartment before and what it had been rented for, and it goes clear back to 1984, and it works up to September 1991, it was at $350 a month. It then went to, let me see, $350 in 1994, then it was $80 a week, and included was utilities. My concern with this now is that these dates were so far back that we're looking at $200 a month, and we're saying that the utilities is going to be keyed in just at $100 a month, and I just don't quite understand that. Everything was higher then and lower now, and that's just not the way that I see things going. And I know when the places that we have, the houses that we have, everything was put on a, I don't know if it was a market rate, what was it, market rate, Mike? And I just don't quite understand this.
Any other discussion? Ron, you have?
If I could just add, if I could just add to that, that Ms. Conrad will also be working for us as a volunteer, eight hours a week, so when you add that up for what her wage is, it's probably another $300 or $400 a month that she's contributing to the city, so that's how we help offset that.
Didn't volunteerism go out the window when all of this other, when we started going market rate with anything?
Well, I can't speak to that.
You know, I mean, this is what it was. That's what the program was before, and then it was like, okay, none of that, and then it's going to go, you know, just flat to where it should be.
That's how we, I mean, it's a very small room, it's a very small space, we just thought that that was a fair.
It hasn't been rented since 1994, is that?
1997 was the last time it was rented.
And not knowing the reason why that didn't take place either, I don't know. Again, there's still, you know, questions that are unknown.
I think with the, what you're saying is the value of her labor that she'll be contributing offsets any difference in any monetary price that she might be making.
Right, it's probably more like $700 a month is what she's really contributing financially and through her time.
And it'd be nice to have somebody there on the premises too.
That's the main thing.
Just to kind of be eyes on the, on the, okay, any other discussion? On the motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Item B is the approval of city center holiday parking program.
hereby move from mayor and council. For the city center holiday parking plan to allow two hours of free parking in the University District and Arts and Entertainment District parking decks on weekdays beginning Monday, December 1st, 2014, through Sunday, January 4th, 2015. Parking in the decks after 4:00 PM in the evenings and all day Saturday and Sunday will be free. Parking in the city center, central business district, street and lot meters will continue to be free after 5:00 PM and all day Saturday and Sunday, as is normally, as it is normally throughout the year.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item C is the approval of a purchase for a bucket truck.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move from the Mayor and City Council approve the purchase of 42-foot working height material handling bucket truck mounted on a 2015 Ford FY15 chassis from Equipment Technology LLC, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, in the amount of $122,977. Account number 5085001-5840-C0090. Currently has $150,000 budgeted for FY15.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. The purchase is approved. Next up is the approval of a purchase, video/audio broadcast equipment upgrade for the council chamber.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the Mayor and City Council approve the purchase and installation of new audiovisual broadcasting equipment in council chamber and the adjacent control room for the Laro Corporation Incorporated in Norristown, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $149,993.15. The source of the funding is public education government fees. The new equipment will improve delivery of communications for our television and online viewing audience while also enhancing the experience for community members who attend Mayor and Council meetings in person.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. The purchase is approved. Next up, item E is the approval of the Bloom Carlyle Trust Fund FY15 funding to the Community Action Council.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for Mayor and Council approval of $4,800 in city funding support from Bloom Carlyle Trust Fund for fiscal year 15. City Community Action Council, the allocation of funds will be distributed to the Community Action Council from Bloom Carlyle Funds on a monthly basis to provide assistance to the poor in need of Hagerstown in accordance with the requirements of the trust fund.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
The only thing that I do want the city to be on top of, and I know Michelle will, is that all paperwork that needs to come in on this fund is that it, you know, it should be there. No letdown on it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries, four to one. Next up is the approval of self-insured workers' compensation program.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move from Mayor and Council approval for staff to begin work on a transition to a self-insured workers' compensation program. The target implementation date for the self-insured program is July 1, 2015. The projected savings from transitioning from the current guaranteed cost model to a self-insured model is $288,645 in the first year, with an overall five-year projected savings of $1,972,115 across all funds.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of research and thought has gone into making this happen. This is a pretty big deal when you get right down to it because it's something brand-new for us. But it appears to be the right thing to do based on everything that we know and can foretell. It's also going to save the city a lot of money and allow us to be able to do some other important things for the citizens of the city of Hagerstown.
Any other discussion? I agree, I'd like to thank staff for putting all the work into this, and it does look like it'll be good for the city. With that, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Next up is the approval of additional position in the Human Resources Department.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move from Mayor and Council approval of the addition of one full-time position in the Human Resources Department. This brings the total number of authorized full-time staff in the Human Resources Department from four to five. The addition of this position is necessary to successfully implement a self-insured workers' compensation program and position the department to better serve the needs of our workforce and operations. This position will be funded through a portion of the savings from converting to a self-insured workers' compensation program. Starting base salary is estimated in the low to mid $50,000 range. A conservative estimate of the total cost of the position, which includes salary, payroll taxes, full benefits, and equipment, is approximately $87,000.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Ms. Paulson, you can hire another staff person. Item H, approval of a retainer agreement for city legal services.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move from Mayor and Council approval of the attached retainer agreement with attorney Mark Boyer to serve as general legal counsel for the city of Hagerstown for the calendar year January 1st, 2015, through December 31st, 2017. The legal services provided hereunder shall be performed by Mr. Boyer as well as the qualified attorneys with whom he will be formally associated at the commencement of the term of this agreement. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
I got a comment. Before our vote, I will just say that I have every faith in the world that our existing council has and will continue to lead us in the right direction.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries, four to one. Item H, approval of a community garden at 513 South Potomac Street.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move from Mayor and Council approval of the installation of a community garden at 513 South Potomac Street. Mayor and Council authorize staff to construct the community garden and support the development of the operating structure in accordance with the plan as presented to Mayor and Council on October 21st, 2014. In addition, staff shall take actions required by the CDBG program to transfer the parcel from the Low and Moderate Income Housing National Objective to a Low and Moderate Area Benefit National Objective for use as a public community garden. Construction of Phase 1 shall commence so that the community garden can be utilized by citizens in spring 2015. Phase 2 may commence once grant funds are available. Funding for Phase 1 of this project shall include the following: 8,000 in current year Parks Division operating funds, 5,000 in developer-paid excise tax funds, 3,000 in current year capital improvement project 859, and approximately 7,300 from a fundraising campaign. In approving this motion, the Mayor and Council hereby acknowledge and express their appreciation to the citizens serving on the community garden task force for their recommendations, which led to the creation of the community garden, and for being part of the operating committee in 2015.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
I have a question. Rodney? When Bestur was looked at, and knowing that this is where the flowers and everything else was, I was given a phone call, and the person wouldn't give me her name, said about the chemicals that was used on the property. And then once the sheds went down, that the concern was, is that how far was these chemicals as far as into the ground? How far did they go? Kristen and I both talked about it, and I said, "You know, I really never thought about that." But was it checked?
Yes. Okay. Two thoughts. The most important thing is, we did have soil tests done, chemical analysis done of all hazardous materials, and it got a clean bill of health for where this is proposed. I seem to recall that the greenhouses were down where Memorial Park is, and this is up the street a little bit. So I don't think it's even the same property. But it really doesn't matter that we did a soil test.
Well, as long as there was a soil test, because from what the lady had indicated to me is that, you know, the whole area that was there, and like I said, Rodney, I really never gave it a thought. You know, I'm looking at central chemical, but I'm not looking at where our flowers are. And certainly, yeah, there would be the possibility to...
It did knock some other ones out of consideration, other sites that they were looking at. This one got it.
Okay.
Thank you, Rodney, as maker of the motion. And thank you for clarifying that because I think people should realize that the city has assured that this, there is no problem with the soil despite whatever urban legend is out there. It's been tested, it's ready to go. I also wanted to mention that part of the funding, as in the dog park, is 7,300 to be raised from a private fundraising campaign. And I want to thank those of the task force and others out in the community that are working to help raise that as well, and add that to the thanks in the motion.
I also want to thank the staff and the task force for doing this. I think this will be a great feather in the cap for the city of Hagerstown and will be a model, hopefully, that can be repeated in other areas of the city.
I think they put together a good plan, so.
And I'll make the first $100 contribution. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Community garden is approved. And with that, we will be adjourned. Thank you, everybody.